Can anybody hear us?
Can anybody hear us?
Yes, commissioners.
Okay, then you're gonna hit the record button and then we're gonna begin.
You did.
Oh, you did? I didn't hear anything. So are we recording?
We are.
Okay, so we're gonna start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll have Allison.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and eternal.
Welcome everybody to the Rockingham County Commissioners Meeting of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And go in attendance. I'm going to go to Zoom first. We have Superintendent Henry. We have the sheriff and Catherine Mann. I don't see any memory of that. I see Kathy Stacy, Pat Conway. I see Jason Henry and Jason Smith. I got everybody there. In the room, I have Robert Burnier, Duke Gates, Allison Kowalski, Commissioner Coyle, Bishop Godu, Leila and Chuck Henderson. And we'll begin with our, the openings, interactive technology for those living with dementia.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? Not on the moment, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Bishop Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ammunition for the Sheriff's Office.
I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Award for bladder scanner.
I move to award the proposal for bladder scanner to Engaged Healthcare Solutions for an amount not to exceed six thousand five hundred dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Award for painting kitchen of long-term care facility.
I move to award the proposal for painting kitchen of long-term care facility to Bouchard Painting Incorporated for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any discussion? I got both hands up, so I'm gonna go with Commissioner Godu.
I don't think that we should take this up. I don't think it was bid properly. I would like to request that this be rebid with specifications of exactly what the work entails. Where the two bids are apples and oranges. And I spoke with the owner of Peak Painters and asked him if he was interested in rebidding based on a different set of specs. I mentioned to him that the other bidder was planning to use two coats of water-based epoxy. He was very familiar with that product. His concern with that product was that it had a lot of odor. And in a working nursing home, he was concerned that over the course of the two or three, you know, whatever period of time it takes him to complete the project, that there'd be an excess amount of odor in the kitchen and and potentially going into the dining room. But he was very familiar with the product and was willing to use it. Also, he said that there was another product available that was a pre-mixed epoxy. The pre-mixed epoxy has similar characteristics to the, the, the regular water-based epoxy. And it doesn't have the, as, as much of an odor. In any event, I think that we should have specs to make sure that we all understand exactly what's being done. He also thought that his tour coming through might have been cut a little bit brief and because he knows that these, his bid is a lot lower, and I didn't disclose how much lower. That it's possible that he did not fully take a look at all of the areas that needed to be painted. So my suggestion is that we deny this at the moment and ask for it to be rebid.
Okay, Commissioner Coyle.
Do you wanna take? It's, it's very concerning that we're unilaterally going to one bidder. And it suggests some, at the very least, appearance of, right, we don't, I don't think there's ever a time that we go to one bidder and say, this other bidder came up with this. Here, change your specs to, and rebid. I mean, that is kind of gander to say, maybe unprecedented isn't the, maybe it's happened before, but that is not something typically we do because of, because you're essentially giving favor to this one bidder. I mean, I don't disagree with you. I had some of the same concerns with respect to the, like, the disparity, you know, the different, I, you know, I raised my hand simultaneously because I think there is a big disparity and maybe we needed to, maybe just, we should try to put it out. I don't think there was anything wrong with what the request for proposals. The RP that went out, I think that maybe just, you know, there aren't, what we've seen is that there aren't a lot of bidders, right? So we need to, you know, maybe sending it out again, we could get some more of the middle, right? Because that, what you're saying is, it seems like two ends of the spectrum. Maybe one is at the end of the, and maybe one is not. But I think, I don't know, I, you know, I'd have to think longer about how to handle it, but I think calling one bidder is a problem. So.
Fair response there?
Yes.
I, I don't see any problem with the fact that I called for information. I didn't divulge anything that he didn't already know. Except that the specs were different. The, the real problem that I have with this is that apparently when the RFPs went out, and I did not review the RFP, but apparently it did not specify, give specifications so that we could evaluate apples and apples. I think it needs to be rebid with new specifications of exactly how we have chosen to proceed and what we want, what kind of paint we want. The fact that we want two coats, not one or two coats. You know, maybe the RFP said, we just want your best recommendation. And they recommended based on, you know, what was going to be the lesser expensive. I have no idea what that RFP said. But I do know that we didn't, we didn't bid the same thing. And I think the, the, the point is that it needs just be rebid so that we're comparing apples and apples.
So now who's? Is it Jason or is it Jude that put this out to bid? Is there? It was my office that put this out. I mean, I'm just gonna share my concern too. I mean, I didn't look at the, the overall proposal. But there is a high and there's a low. So obviously, you know, Commissioner Godu probably brings up a good point. You know, are we, are we, obviously, we're not comparing apples to, apples to apples. There was a little bit of a thing and I, I don't know, so.
So, so the RFP went out requesting that the painters would come onsite.
We compared the products that were recommended by the vendor.
Yeah.
My purchasing coordinator is really well versed in paint. So she compared the products. Additionally, the, the references were checked and the references from the lower quoting vendor were much more smaller residential type, whereas the higher quote was much more commercial, certainly more on the scale of the kind of work that Jason is asking to have done in the kitchen. So that, that was our input. We didn't put the RPO, but you know, he certainly invited us to review the proposals when they came in.
Right, okay. Jason, is this time sensitive?
It is not time sensitive, Commissioner.
Yeah, they got my view.
Can you hear me?
Maybe the owl needs to be turned on. I don't see, I don't hear anything coming out of them.
I hear you, Jason.
You hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, Jason.
Okay. Commissioners, can you hear me?
Hold on, Jason.
Yeah, we get it right the first. It's absurd.
Can you guys hear us?
We can hear you.
But we can't hear you.
Yeah.
Is there a button on the other side of that machine?
How about now? Can you still hear us?
Yes. We can hear you.
Still can't hear you for some reason. Looks like I'm.
Where were the specifications in the RFP?
All right, Jason, go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Commissioners?
I can hear you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes, so the specifications, we asked for the main kitchen area, washroom, entryway and hallway. I mean, I'm no painting expert by any means. So we asked that the vendors that would want to bid to come in to actually tour the area and the location. If there's a problem, you know, in the past, whenever it involves something like this, I always consult with Jude to get her recommendation and her opinion on what is the best vendor to choose, either because she has the history of particular vendors that we have partnered with in the past or best pricing and product and particular quality. So through consult with her, this was the recommendation. I am more than happy to go out to bid. There is no particular timeline with this. I am just trying to make sure that the kitchen, it's been over twenty years since it's been painted. There, it is in rough condition and I am just trying to get the area painted while meeting the best specifications moving forward from Jude. So I'm more than happy to go back out.
All right. And let me just, so let me just finish up mine. If other commissioners wanna add on after that, that's fine too. I sort of agree with Commissioner Coyle that it's not necessarily, you don't, there's no hot set of rules about reaching out. But when you, when you do bidding, people can perceive it in a certain way. So you gotta be very careful. I, I would never do that. And that's not to say, you know, it's right or wrong. I think the fact that the numbers came in, one high and one low is enough of a flag to start asking questions, but we gotta be careful of reaching out to these bidders. Because we don't know what's being said. We don't wanna hold favoritism to any of these vendors, but, but anyway, it is what it is. And did either Commissioner wanna follow up with anything else?
I think there is a real, I mean, I do think there's a real concern that we've now given one vendor information that their bid was significantly lower than, and what materials the other vendor was using. And it's supposed to be a closed bidding process. So how now this one vendor has all this extra information and one is gonna just inflate, it's like we, we've told them, hey, come up in your bid. And two, it's like this other vendor who, you know, Bouchard, who did the closed bidding now has, like, is at a disadvantage. So I, I think it's very problematic.
Well, let me, let me, I'm gonna let Commissioner Godu say something, finish up. I will, to his defense, I will say that he did mention that he didn't give any number. Oh, but still, reaching out could, just the appearance is, is tough. But anyway.
There was no time to, to get this. You know, I got the information quickly. I called to get information and the, 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 the important information. First of all, he already knew that his bid was really low. Somebody else had told him that. I, I don't know who. I didn't get into that. And I didn't get into how much or anything because quite frankly, I'd rather take the low bid and save the county money. But the, the fact remains that they were not bid with the same materials. They were not, so there's two different kinds of paint. We should specify the kind of paint because apparently there's significantly difference in price. There's also whether it's going to be one coat or two coat. We should specify if we want one coat or two coat. Then we're on an even keel. I, I personally don't care who gets to bid, as long as I, I, nothing, never, didn't know anything more about this except that when I read it, but the specs are different and obviously the, the vendors chose the specs. That's not how it thinks something should be bid. We should be telling people what we wanted to bid on. And I just think this should be redone.
So I'm just gonna chime in again and say, you're a hundred percent correct and, and as, as far as the fact that you saw a high in a little bit and it raised a red flag for you. I think it raised a red flag for everybody. Which is fine. And then this is, this is the place to bring that up. Reaching out to vendors is kind of a gray area. But anyway, I think that for the bidding, you know, you're, I'm right, it should be in more detail. Exactly. And again, this probably would have raised red flags. It did for me when I read it this morning. I saw a high and a low. And we could have asked questions from that point, but anyway.
Or called the department heads, you know, and said, hey, could we get some background before we go out to a?
Yeah.
I mean,
Yeah.
I just don't understand. I'm concerned going forward. And like, you, I was also looking at the references, which is one has like individuals, the low one has individuals versus the higher one does, it's like state of New Hampshire, you know, DHHS, like Circuit Court, you know, like it has a lot of more commercial applications, which is what, you know, obviously what we are. I I don't, I'm not opposed to, like, again, like, putting it back out to bid to to everyone. My concern is now one vendor
Yeah.
has insider insight.
This don't. That's not accurate. One vendor knows that the other vendor quoted a different product. That's the only information that I transferred to this other, the other vendor. If that was a different product, I was asking to get some information about the product. And if it was something he was familiar with, if he's, if he said to me, I would never use such a product. I don't know, I don't, I'm not qualified to use it or for something, you know. Now, you know, you're gonna either buy a Chevy or a Mercedes. You can't compare the one to the other. But that's not the case. The only thing that I told, that I discussed was the, the epoxy and would he be capable of doing that? And he said, yes. And I expressed the concerns that he had, and that's for different evaluation. I just think that this is an unfair bid and that it needs to be bid out so that we decide what the specs, specifications of the bid are. And then we take the bid again.
So I'm, I think this is a, a learning, a learning thing here. I think what we'll do is, I think we'll, we'll put, we'll put it out to bid, rebid. But I think moving forward that if there are concerns in the future, not to reach out to the vendors, but to reach out to other fellow commissioners. As I mentioned, if, if it's a red flag that pops up, it's better to discuss it here because just like, I, I don't believe you did anything wrong as far as disclose numbers or anything, but just the perceived issue could be, you know, put us in a really bad spot.
The other thing is, I don't think we wanna get into the business of saying prescribing specific, like, isn't this what the, the, they're experts in their trade, so they're gonna give us, as part of their bid, what materials they're gonna use? And so, and then we evaluate based on all those things. I don't think we want that level of specification because not that we can't, but we wanna see, you know, we wanna see what they're going to give us, right? So.
But I think everybody's right here and, and the fact that we need to be a little bit more detailed in what we're expecting in our bids as well. Moving forward would be, would be good. So chalk this up to a learning lesson. And I think what we'll do is we'll take a motion. We need to table it or we bid a motion.
There's a motion on the floor. We need to vote.
You made a motion on, what motion did you make?
The motion on the floor is to approve the
Oh, yeah.
the kitchen painting. I seconded the discussion, so we're in discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, any further comments at all before we move on to the, to the vote?
Commissioners, this is Jason. When I redo the RFP, I will be sure to have the commissioners review it as I am not a paint expert. So I will make sure that you all agree before it goes out.
I mean, how are we just, and to that point, you know, how are we going to just, like, who is gonna be the expert of the commissioners to decide what, what paint we wanna use in the RFP? I mean, that's. Okay.
No, I think that Jude would offer her expertise.
And what we can do, what we've done in the past is we've specified a product that we believe is of the highest quality and then say, or performance.
Okay.
So if someone quotes a product that's not what we asked for, they tell us how it differs from what we specified. And that, or we can kind of elevate it a bit and help it out.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right, very good. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu, no. Commissioner Coyle?
No.
And I will vote no and entertain a new motion.
Well.
So, right, so, so that, we're not awarding anything, so.
Yes, I mean, do we have to, okay, I make a motion to go act, go back out to bid for painting the kitchen of long-term, term care facility.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. I think we've had plenty of discussion, so I'll entertain the vote. So on, on the new motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so consent agenda?
I move to approve the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three public meeting minutes and further the March ninth question and, twenty twenty-three question and answer session with Warren Street Architects and Harvey Construction.
A second. Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion on that? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Payroll.
I move to approve a payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for the period ending March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussed. Not like most. Yes.
I, I, I don't, I didn't see the documentation on this. You know, we get the, the draft, it says a dollar. And then maybe I'm not looking, seeing the, the new
on your agenda, it should have one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand.
This does here, but on the back, I hope. Do I have?
Although I received an email with.
Did I get this in an email?
No, I didn't receive that in an email. I typically just have.
And this is just payroll.
It's just payroll.
Okay, but just except for the number, I haven't had an opportunity to review anything, that's all.
So what would you like to do, Jason? Did you wanna, did you, well, I'll, I'll, I'll vote on it.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm sure that it's, I mean, the, the amount is difficult.
Okay.
And I, I'm just making notes for myself that I haven't, didn't see anything. But so on the motion.
I think the, yes. I'm answering.
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna have a question.
Sure. The answer, I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What shall I be including in the internal agenda for payroll?
I think, I, I'm not sure.
Chuck, one of those ready?
Well, yesterday, we've been ready until in the afternoon.
Right, so I think.
I mean, we can do the PDF file or whatever number pages you want, as you can tell it's a one page file.
Just.
This is what everybody's specific paycheck, is that essentially what this, it's way more detailier than that I'm gonna be able to take a look at. I guess it would be good to see something that shows what a typical weekly payroll is compared to other weeks if we, I don't know.
Will we?
Some way of evaluating if this is, I know on sometimes we get this same motion and it's far to a three million because there's other things that are mixed in with that.
I, I can, I can put in additional language if there is something that's more out of the ordinary than seeing something between upper one point two nine to one point three, whatever. If there's something out of the ordinary, if there's something else in there, whether it's something like, you know, longevity happened or the mid-year cash outs of all the earned time, and I can give like a rough dollar estimate of those as far as the effect.
But usually historically, what we've done is when you look at it, you see the value. You're like, oh, I know, like, you know, I've asked questions or even Commissioner Tom Borello used to always ask, it's like, if there's, if it's off, you're like, wait, that might, that amount is off, then when it comes, you make the motion, we ask the question, we get the explanation.
I can tell something as far as my email to Leila, as far as the dollar amount, as far as why there's, you know, reasons for increases. Or it's nice.
So, so when are those typically ready?
I wouldn't really say typical. I mean, it could be as early as a Tuesday afternoon to six PM on Wednesday.
Yeah, we were still pushing stuff over from our.
Okay, but if Commissioner Godu wants to see the details, is he able to come in to see the details? Is there a way for him to look at the details? That's, I think that's the question. Or are we getting this?
We'll just put out the PDF file and save it down and I don't, it's, I can't give you, I can't commit to a certain time for it to be done except for like five, six PM on, on Wednesday, because that's our deadline for getting the direct deposit file.
All right, just checking.
That's, I, we can, we can.
I'd be satisfied.
PDF, I can. But as people's details.
That's a lot.
I would have to do somehow summary, this, the, the GL side of things, I guess.
What, what would help, what would help assist me? Is that if we had a typical payroll or if we had a list of what the payroll amounts was, but say, the past month. And then this one all at once, then we, I would have an opportunity to see, is it increased, is it decreased? And then I know if there was some something that ought to be questioned.
All right.
I'm looking at this enough.
So we're gonna move.
In the vacuum.
Unless you have something else to say, Commissioner.
I just don't think we should be sending this whole thing.
No, and I don't, I'm not interested in receiving it.
Okay, because it has confidential information and that makes, but private security.
Okay. Now, where are we?
Do we vote on that?
I think we did, yes. I think, yeah, three zero.
We did.
All right, so liaison updates. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Coyle.
All right. The jail population has gone up a bit. It's now at one fifty. There's been lots of intakes. So there is fortunately no COVID at the jail. We have three new COs for doing their polygraph. And if they pass their polygraph, we'll have five to start. Today, we have an opioid abatement committee meeting. So that's sort of exciting. Over at Long Term Care, we had one positive resident who came in from rehab. The COVID transmission level is at moderate, so it's gone down a little bit. They started plated meals at the assisted living facility, which is nice. It's just like really nice. And to you, Commissioner Godu, an elimination of, yeah. Right now, the assisted, interestingly, the assisted living facility is at forty-six. The maximum, the census is forty-nine. So we are like, I mean, we are full, full, full. So that's very good. I'm gonna take a deep breath before I get to finance because I've been so busy, but we have our new grant writer and she's been reaching Emily and she's been reaching out to department heads so we can pursue grant opportunities. Chuck is almost done with payroll for budget purposes. It's been budget, budget, budget. So it's coming along. So soon, you know, it's a lot of work, you know, putting together payroll, but that will be an important, obviously, a very critical piece to the overall budget and soon we'll be able to evaluate that. I think we're scheduled for department head meetings with department heads to review the budget next week. So we should be, you know, on track with that. Yes. Some not great news is that ERAP is coming to a close and this has to do with use of Uncore. The software system that we are using. So we have to buy licensing for it and essentially they wouldn't do a three-month licensing. They want a whole twelve months. And so if we use that and do a twelve months, it's very expensive. It would pretty much erode so significantly the rest of our ERAP funds that the program has to come to a close so we can properly, you know, so we're gonna try to do our best to help finish out, you know, the individuals we have, not take any more applications and. Out, you know, the individuals we have not take any more applications and um, but it's it's disappointing certainly.
Well, so I can say on on paper, on black and white, it does say annual, it's an annual on Mac renewal, but the thing is. We tried to appeal to them that, you know, this is taking assistance directly away from people who are only gonna do one year thing. And they weren't um.
Recept.
Off of that, no, they're not.
They didn't want to do a month, a month retention.
And I, I would have been happy with at least like maybe do quarterly and and we get, you know, basically to the end of June.
Right.
And now they weren't, so I, you know, it's like this is taking away assistance from from people, so. Uh, and we had a sharp increase in number of applications, sorry, I'm. So last two weeks, hundred thirty-five new applications. In the last two weeks. So that basically bulked up our queue that combined with this from Uncore, it's like. Yeah, just can't take any more additional ones. It's very unfortunate.
Well, first off. Just on that same subject real quick, I think two years to two-year run was pretty good. We helped a lot of people. We should be proud of what we did, um. And we all knew it was gonna come to an end eventually, so. Tough situation on that, I get it. We don't want to give. No sense in signing a contract, it's expensive, really use the money for the people that need the help and. Just let them know that it's coming on.
No, that's conclude.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Um, so, so for me, I'm just gonna say, well, I got a couple of things, um. One was I was uh on rental assistance issue, um. Executive Council Janet Stevens had reached out to me. Um, about a. Somebody that was getting rental assistance, they were on the state's program originally. Um. When the state's program ran out, they moved a lot of people, the cap programs actually pushed people that lived in Rockland County over to the county program because they knew we still had it. Um, and then. When we decided, well, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, when we knew that our program was about to end, we we sent letters to landlords and tenants saying it was it was ending. I got a frantic email from Council Stevens that there was a um. Uh, a woman that was staying in a motel in one of our towns, um, she recently been widowed, she's on S S I. Ability. She had no place to go. The landlord or the hotel manager had mentioned that she can only stay till April first. And that they were frantic because she had no place to go. Um, and so. I I came in Tuesday and. Park, the Jason Smith came in, stopped by and explained to him the same situation and. He came up with a great idea and said, why don't we see if we can maybe possibly put her into assisted living? I thought that was a great idea and thanks to Jason's help, um, and Kendra's, Kendra? Assisted living, Kendra's help, um, they reached out to this woman's contact, social worker, whatever. Um, to see if they could, she could qualify for assisted living. Which was good. I ended up calling Executive Council Stevens and she was more than. Thankful because this woman really was in dire straits, you know, um, so hopefully, uh, I haven't done any updates yet, but I'm sure I will later on. To see if if she um she got through. And qualified or anything, but hopefully, we're working on solutions, even though this is coming on, so.
Talk about a collaborative effort, you know, so thank you to.
I mean, I felt bad for this woman, that's why.
Seriously.
It's it's tough, but Jason's the really one who gave up this idea and I'm like, that's that's great. So anyway, we'll stay tuned on that. I'm sure other commissioners will get calls on it as time closes, um. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is I was thinking, when we sent out that letter to people, tenants and landlords. Would it be possible to send a brief letter? With a um like a, almost like a recruiting for position, job positions? To say we have available jobs, even though rental system's coming to an end. If you're looking for a job. Maybe we send some sort of a letter that just says, hey, we have job openings here in the county and maybe that's just another way of getting people. Uh, on board.
Jason mentioned it to me, actually Jason and I were talking. And he said, hey, you know, when Rachel was Jason, it's one of those lightbulb moments, but we mentioned somehow the conversation got on and said, maybe we, you know, why aren't we doing something like this too? Because it's an income level for them, you know, this is, and we have, you know. Certainly entry-level positions that people could very much handle, some part-time if they can't do full-time, so there's opportunity, I think.
Yeah.
So maybe. If we have like a listing or something, we could get from you with some, something that.
Because somebody, someone's gonna realize that their their assistance is coming to an end and they they may not have a job and they're frantic and this is an opportunity to say.
Yeah.
Hey.
Do a nice flyer that we could send out, I think, that would talk about more just entry level. It's more entry level, I think, obviously, some of these individuals are having housing issues. So we have plenty of housekeeping, laundry, the P C Ps, shipping tag. I know train, I could train and have mentorship.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And the other thing is, um, you know, I had a meeting this one from United Way and they do, they have programming to help. To get landlords, more landlords set up doing section eight housing for, you know, or um, so uh. Subsidized housing opportunities. And I wonder if we would, and so the landlords, many landlords have become accustomed to having that. Guarantee of their tenants receiving the rent, you know, that it is, I mean, we were essentially in in insurance. Um, insurance carrier, I mean, or insurance provider to the uh landlords. So I wonder if we could. Have, maybe have them draft a letter and that we could include as well to just hit our, you know, as. By the way, we're just like a little pamphlet that they could, that could go out as part of the packet to the landlords, just saying, hey, listen. Here's. We know our program's coming to an end, here alternatives, if you're, you know, sort of enjoying or like liking that short insurance model, here's another way to. Here's another opportunity for that.
Yeah.
For programming.
So, alright.
Just more ways to help people, again. Cross, cross-marketing.
That's it for me, so, um, alright, so, um. We're gonna go on to new building construction budget and before I start, I just want to say that, um. Commissioner Godu had reached out to put this on to the agenda, um, a couple of weeks ago, I believe, it was. Last minute, last time, so I didn't put it on last week, but I promised that I would put it on this week, um. And so we're gonna have a, hopefully, a very short discussion. Um, on B and C here and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Godu, um. Just to begin the conversation, this is gonna be on the building. Construction budget.
Uh, well. I've sent this construction budget out. Earlier. It comes out to a total of uh eighty-seven million dollars. Uh. And my only concern is that, because this is an estimate, this is not, we're waiting for the. The real budget when the G N P comes through, then we'll know what it is, but um. When I asked for a budget a month or so ago, I got a budget from. Uh, that was prepared the year previous for sixty-six million dollars. Since then, we added the solar farm into the budget, so. Relatively speaking, it was really seventy-six million dollars at the time. Uh, I got revised numbers from Harvey Construction. And also. In a more detailed way, looked at uh Warren Street's. Uh, contract and came up with all of these costs. Uh, turns out that our budget is. Uh. With a four million dollar contingency, which um Jonathan from Warren Street suggested was appropriate. Comes out to eighty-seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight, seven thirty-eight. And. Again, that's an estimate, but I want to make sure that we have enough money set aside earmarked. Uh, to complete the project at this estimate and if not, we need to talk about uh where that money may or may not come from. Of course, the G N P could come in higher or lower than this number and we'd have to redo it again, but. My reason for presenting the budget is so that we're aware of what the costs are and that we appropriately plan for those financial uh expenditures.
Uh, yeah, so I don't think anything's changed from the last time you presented this unless that budget went up or down.
No.
Um, in the minutes that we have that. That, and again, I'm coming from a standpoint that you're a newer commissioner, you have every right to get up to speed. And I think both commissioners, myself, Commissioner Coil, recognize that. Um, we're giving you every opportunity to get up to speed on this, on this building. We have a special meeting, we brought in both uh Warren Street uh and Harvey Construction, uh, you know. At that time, so you, you felt more comfortable, you asked your questions, but. Uh, at the end of that, you had mentioned that you had no more further questions. And you would wait for the, for the hard numbers before we ask new questions. Um, I don't know if you remember that.
I have no more questions for Warren Street and Harvey. My question that I'm proposing. Right here than I've been trying to propose for a month is. Do we have enough money? To cover, cover, and I, I I I'm hoping that uh. Somebody can. Chuck could put to evaluate. Make sure that we have the money set aside, that's all.
Let me just say one thing, I've been here for maybe three years. I would think that if it was an issue. I have full confidence in Chuck Nickerson to come to us saying, hey. There's an issue and we need to talk about it and address it, uh, you know, he's the finance guy and no disrespect to you, Commissioner Godu, I I don't know what your expertise is on. Construction budgeting, I don't know. Um, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't do it, that's up to you. I feel comfortable with my department heads, if they come forward to me and say there's a problem, then we address it. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable. That, that you think it's a problem or maybe you don't think it's a problem, I don't know, I don't want to speak for you, but, um. I. I think we've hit all these issues over the last couple of months and I don't see it being an issue right now, but I'll let Commissioner Coil.
I mean, I agree, Commissioner Chiruchel, I think we first, like, this is. A. I don't, I don't see the utility of doing this now until we get the G N P, which is. Uh, within two weeks, so like. Let's sit back and get the G N P. See, as to your point, could go up, could go down, so, I mean, it's sort of an exercise in futility without actually having the hard numbers. The second factor is, which from the finance side of it, is that. There are a lot of moving parts. So to say concretely. A, B, C, and D. Is like the. It's more like we're gonna pay, A could come out of this, 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 or if this happens, then this, so there's, there are variables. That, and I don't disagree with you in the sense of wanting to, you know, make sure we have enough money, this is an important, it's a hugely important project and we want to make sure we're buttoned up. But, um, I could not echo uh Commissioner Chiruchel's sentiments more in saying that. Uh. We have the most amazing depart, director of finance. And the way his brain works and his abilities are like. Like far exceed anything I could ever do and, um. And he is incredibly dependable and incredibly reliable and very creative. So. It's, I think some of this stuff is just, it's a little difficult to. You, I am, you're like, I want this all pinned down and it just doesn't work that way. It's, I mean, a lot of it is, but some of it isn't. So I, my suggestion is. Let's get the actual G D P. Get that figure and then talk about and then go through that and say. And if it's contingent, like it could add, come from here or could come from there. You know, in those var, some of those variables, we can address those areas that might be, you know, might be some variables. And then, you know, all be on the same page.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Chuck Nicholson, where's he at? So it's Commissioner Godu's concerns, I I am looking out for other, you know, other avenues, other revenue sources that were previously disclosed. Or that not necessarily known at the time either, because since then, we have received about half a million or will be. Maybe this week, receiving half a million from the two uh uh labor projects um that were, that FEMA's approved. Is giving us. And I think there could be up to another half million from FEMA as well, and that was not. We only had budget about twenty-five thousand for FEMA revenues, so why be recommending and we'll see action in the department post-budget? That for some of these unanticipated revenue sources that come in over budget, that becomes committed, well, not committed, but assigned fund balance. That becomes a budget transfer out to the capital outlay line, like a. One-year spike this year, maybe next year, there's other courses too that become the spike in capital outlay line to go over to the capital fund. To, to go towards the construction budget. So. It looks like anyways, we're gonna have over a million dollars for FEMA. Well, we're gonna be over a million dollars for FEMA, that's not so you on here. We also. Will be changing our accounting method for um, for how we do the uh recognized expenses. For the category assistance, which makes up about twenty-three percent of our budget. Um, historically, we'd always treated like the bills that for the state that correspond to our fiscal year. Were always, July was the twelfth bill for us because they used to prior months claims, June claims and before. For being, you know, the, how they divvy up the two G L accounts. Within category assistance for the expense of the next year's, next month's bill. If the state, you know, if we close down shop, the state's like a saver a lot, or, you know. We close down shop June thirty, the state's not gonna say we owe the July bill, they're gonna say you owe the June bill. So this is actually gonna create another one point seven million as well. Alright, that will be under budget and category assistance, so I am looking at other avenues, other revenue sources.
I I'm not questioning your work in this, I'm, what I'm, the the concern that I have. Is that when I asked for budget. I was given a budget of sixty-six million dollars. I calculated the budget and I come up with a budget that's seven million dollars in excess. And additionally, I believe we should be including four million dollars in our budget for a contingency. So. And we haven't accounted for that, so based on the the numbers that I was originally given, there's, it, our estimate is in. Um, going to be more money. And I just simply, I'm, I don't care where the funding come, I mean, I care, but I'm not concerned with where, so much where this money is coming from, is just simply. Do we have enough money to cover this, not?
So.
That's my only concern, and if you're not interested in pursuing that, then that's fine with me too, but this is, this is my work.
Who are you directing that question to?
That. Well, if you are interested to know whether or not, what, if, there's enough money to cover the budget as I have put it through.
Well, so, as I mentioned earlier. You're brand new. I've been here, I've been on this, looking, watching this project for eight years. If I had a, if I had a concern that was, I know that Chuck Nickerson would tell me if there's a major issue. You seem to be bringing this issue up at least every two, three weeks and it's the same thing over and over and over. So, and like I said, I've been patient because I figured you're the new guy, you deserve to get up to speed on it. Sounds like you're very uncomfortable.
No.
But.
It's not that I'm uncomfortable, it's that it's eleven million dollars more than what was presented to me and I just want to make sure we have the money.
But you also add in solar when Chuck doesn't announce solar, it's this big shell game about moving money around, so it looks like we're over budget and. You're really presenting things in a different way that I don't necessarily agree and and, you know, but anyway, Christian Coil.
I, I'm just gonna follow up because you, you've identified eighty-seven, right? But we were always doing solar, so the seventy-six.
If that included solar.
You, your eighty-seven includes solar, we've always been at seventy-six, I know you, and so you're comparative, you're saying we were sixty-six and now we're eighty-seven.
Well, no, 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 we were at seventy-six, we're in agreement there.
So, yes. And then there's an additional four that you've just baked in, now. We can make a decision as the commissioners whether we want to include that money, but that's money that you've identified.
Contingency.
Right. So. Just to sort of. So what we're talking about, because we've been, we've been on target for our seventy-six, right? Um.
No, it was seven million dollars.
Well, you're saying, you're saying, yes, we should be at that, based on, if you take out your four, that there's seven million dollars unaccounted for, but that's. And that's your, essentially, that's your point, right? We have seven million.
That's all.
That, so, now Chuck's just identified. That, so, now Chuck's just identified in like with a, you know, snap of the fingers and one point seven, so. Um, and we have, what is not identified is that we have more. Of the lost revenue portion of ARPA. That we haven't, that we can access, we need to, we had our initial ARPA. I, you know, the ARPAs, we agreed to put money towards certain categories, well. At, you know, when we first got our ARPA funds, but one thing we really didn't, um, you know, things have changed. So there's a, a number of places where we have not expended. The money that we thought we were for certain ARPA categories. And it's not as relevant, so there's another source of, because our, um, because of our lost revenue went up. It allows more latitude in what we can use that money for, so. I, I feel confident in saying that there's probably another two million that we could pull. Um, I don't know, Chuck, maybe that's a. Depending on where we, you know, not all from one place, but. Just pulling a little where plate we didn't utilize, so.
I'm gonna bring this, I'm gonna bring this discussion to full around here and just say, to mention that. Until we get the hard numbers, this discussion we can have when we have those.
Right.
That way we know what we're dealing with, it's, I mean, to do hypotheticals now. To figure out whose budget's right, who's wrong, or where the money's gonna come from, is this gonna be a long drawn out process? And today's not the day to do that, but.
Commissioner Chiruchel, I I respectfully disagree that it's a long drawn out process, I'm asking a very simple question. Do we have enough money to cover us eighty seven million dollar budget?
Well, you did the budget, you tell me.
I have no idea where the revenues, on the revenue side, I've only calculated the expense side. And I'm coming up with expenses that we should have at eighty seven million dollars, and I'm just simply, I'm not accusing that we don't have the money. I'm just asking if we do, I'm just looking for an answer to that question, and if the answer is yes, we have the money, all set.
Have you ever picked up a phone and called Chuck and asked him?
Yeah, I haven't got an answer.
The short answer is, we will. That's the shorter, we will, and I think.
This is getting crazy.
Just looking for an answer.
Well, I think the answer is we will, not everything is hard and stone, and that was my point, but, you know, the F, we will. We're going to finish this project, we're going to do it, we'll get, you know, we will make this happen, and um, there.
I'm I'm sure we will make it happen, it's just a question of whether we have the funds set aside for an eighty seven million dollar project. I mean, we'll ask, we have to ask the same question when the GMP comes in and we see what that new number is. And the question is, do we have the funds, right, it's just an exercise to make sure that we are prepared.
And my.
And we were prepared previously for seventy six million, and I'm suggesting that we should be prepared for eighty seven million, that's all.
And my point is. Eighty seven is really only seven, because you're depending on what the board votes on that for. The additional point is, what I was trying to say is, in short order, and the we will, is because we're not shelling out. The entire sum of the money on day one, right? This is somewhat fluid, because this is going to be, you know, um, in, a long building process. And so there is some fluidity in terms of other grant and revenue sources that. Would, can go to this project that might not be, like, we know that there are a number of things available, and so. And sort of some places that we have to. Every single thing isn't identified, it doesn't mean we don't have the money for the, for the building.
I'm not suggesting that we do or we don't.
Okay.
I'm just asking the question, and I would, I was hoping for an answer.
Okay, we are going to, Chuck, did you want to say something real quick?
We do have enough, it's just a matter of how deeply do we dip into fund balance if there aren't other funding sources, but the money is there. This is the recommended percentage that, you know, national government finance officers association would say you should always keep. As far as being fund balanced, but that's like two months worth, um. But, you know, we, you know, again, I just mentioned a few other. Revenue sources that, you know, because I never, you never really want to accrue high dollars for FEMA as example. Because it's such a long drawn out process, or you're clearly even recognized as revenue until you get it. Yeah, so that's something that, you know, I can really disclose or offer up until it actually happened.
Right, right.
So we had over a million of that actually happened, and hopefully another half million of that actually happening, so.
Alright, let's, thank you, I appreciate that, uh, let's move on to the management of third party testing for the building construction. Um, what is your concern there?
Uh, well, simply put, it it looks as if um. There will be expenses in the area of five hundred thousand dollars. That we can have billed directly to the county, or it can go under the management of Warren Street. It's currently not under the management of Warren Street, but Warren Street has called them out as expenses that they would uh, expect. To uh, incur, and that if they incur those expenses, that they will charge. A ten percent management fee to manage those, so the question is, do we uh. Moving forward, do we employ Warren Street at the cost of fifty thousand dollars? To manage those that work, or do we uh, do it directly? And and save the money, this is independent testing that I think that uh, I mean, comes directly to the county anyway.
Yeah, you got your answer.
So that saves us money.
I'll do it.
Excellent.
I also don't think it's, but, I mean, it's wonderful.
Alright. Alright, let's move on to resources. Uh, Allison, I'm possibly seeing the director for fully recognition gift card purchase.
I move to approve the purchase of a hundred and fifty dollar gift card to the bistro at La Belle Winery. And a hundred and fifty dollar gift card to River House in Portsmouth, utilizing the cabin theory two point three five with the ARPA project funds as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Sorry, motion has been made in second, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sign on bonus, staff schedule, long term care services.
I move to approve a sign on bonus for the full time position of staff scheduler in the amount of five thousand dollars. Fifteen hundred at four months, fifteen hundred at eight months, and two thousand at twelve months, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made in second, is any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Uh, regrade, status change, title change, long term.
Yeah, I move to approve a regrade, status change, title change of a full time account technician. Med D position to a part time business office assistant position, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Sorry, motion's been made in second, is any discussion?
Do we feel, you feel comfortable in terms of, like, are we still covered under the med D stuff?
Um, Jason, yeah, uh, because that's.
It's incorporated in in the jobs, um, and so it doesn't really need to be part of the job title.
Okay. That sounds good.
Uh, any further discussion, not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, status change for long term care services, assisted living.
I move to approve a status change to two part time personal care partner positions to full time personal care partner positions. As recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Sorry, motion's been made in second, is discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes, long term care, uh, factor healthcare staffing.
I move to approve the factor healthcare staffing agreement and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of long term care services.
Second, motion's been made in second, is a discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, Golden Tides Dental Service Agreement.
I move to approve the amendment to the Golden Tides Dental Service Agreement as recommended by the senior director of long term care services.
Second, motion's been made in second, is any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes, sheriff's office. Uh, Massachusetts Office of AG MOU.
I move to approve the Massachusetts Office of the Attorney General MOU and. Deconfliction and case management protocol and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the High Chair.
Second, motion's been made in second, is any discussion?
We.
Commissioner Coyle?
I was just, one second, just calling you know.
Do you have any questions?
No.
So, is it fair to say this is just for work that, um, you know. The drug task force might do going into, um, you know, Lawrence or Lowell and that type thing.
Commissioner, I can address that for you, um, actually, it's a little different, um, we were approached by the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office. Because of the number of cases we have worked with the Massachusetts State Police and other drug units right there along the border. Um, one of the things they offered is a funding source for us, because so much of our work. When we trace it back, uh, develops cases down into the Commonwealth and they. Appreciate the level of the quality of work our task force does that makes their cases down there easier. So they're actually willing to fund the cases uh, that we're working here in New Hampshire. Uh, let's face it, they all have a nexus going back to Merrimack County, um, just the way it is, Lawrence is a source city that's. Naturally recognized as a source city for narcotics for all of New England. So even if a case doesn't take us into the Commonwealth, they're willing to fund portions of our cases up here.
So, okay.
Further comments?
I'm just trying to, so how does it work? I'm just curious.
We were too. We were very curious about how this was gonna happen, and, you know, I'm a big believer, there's no such thing as free money, you know, where are the, where are the tentacles on this one? And the tentacles on this one are really just the documentation, because the the ultimate sources of money is federal. This is under the CLOPS grant, but this was CLOPS grants that was awarded to the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office. They managed that through a team of folks from the Massachusetts State Police. And because of the, again, the quality of the work that they've seen coming from our task force. Weeding down to into areas like Haverhill, Lawrence, uh, even Chelsea. A lot of the stuff that we've done up here by developing the cases up here, and what the major cases down there. And they appreciate that, and they, and they gave us a great kudo that they did an analysis of. Different drug units throughout New England and their ability to develop cases, and they say we're top tier. So they want to work with us, because we make, we make cases here that we, the bigger case.
Yeah, so you, yeah.
I'll say, Commissioner Coyle?
Um, I.
Well, you have.
Yeah. I was just curious, so then how, you just have to bill, you're essentially, we're essentially gonna be a sub recipient of the grand award and you're gonna be. Billing to the, them or submitting paperwork to say this case, uh. You know, has connections to Massachusetts such that we should be reimbursed for the work we did. And then how do you bill? I'm, I mean, like, there's nothing, we can also talk online, offline, I'm not, I was just sort of more curious about the.
Catherine can cover that for you, how the finances are gonna work.
Yeah, so there'll be a series of reporting down to their agency, so there's some daily, weekly, and monthly reporting. Basically, that all kind of cumulates over the course of the month, at the end of the month. We'll run our payroll records, submit for overtime, this will be similar to the US Marshals Agreement you approved a couple of weeks ago. Where it's just the overtime portion itself, not the salary expenses, so this will actually come out of our outside detail line, just like those other programs, FBI and US Marshals. Um, but we'll submit those uh, reports down to the monthly and get reimbursed.
Okay, will it be, so is it just more of a pass through, or is it actual, because we're not getting, we're still paying this. Salaries, it's just overtime that we would.
Yeah, just overtime will be reimbursed, uh, no salary expenses uh, will be reimbursed, but uh, we will get the salary portion for overtime.
Okay, and we're paying the um, additional fees for um, the roll ups for New Hampshire retirement system. So there are some.
Yeah, but generally, these are cases that were already working anyway, on overtime, so it'll be nice to get some of it back.
Fair enough.
Further questions? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Very good, now we're on department head updates, um, I didn't see Pat calling me.
She had to go to court.
Okay, I kind of figured, too bad, but, um, it's good to see her, which they lost three weeks, it's good, um, I'm going to Cathy Stacy. Morning Cathy.
Good morning, um, pretty much everything's going the same as it has been, kind of slow over here when we're talking about recording stuff. We did have a big transaction that was in Rye, it was for over six million dollars of home in Rye. Uh, but that was, you know, we we love to see that as a ninety four thousand dollar transfer tax stamp. I want you to know that I'm gonna be meeting with Senator Gray next week with regards to myself and David Ross. With regards to the county cap and what's happening with the budget when it comes to the nursing homes and. The uh, stuff that happened yesterday up at the state house with the house and the finance, it's. Kind of forgot about us, so we're gonna make sure that we're. Completely covered in the monies that we need and and we're expecting uh, get put back into the budget. And then we're also gonna be meeting with Senator Carson, I haven't, don't have a date yet with with regards to some of the retirement bills. Because they're really gonna have a negative effect on the county, so that's my report, thank you.
Thanks Cathy, uh, Jason Smith. Morning Jason.
Good morning commissioners, um, we have uh, one resident, um, as you know, that has tested positive, uh, they're from another community, so. Um, they are on our skilled rehab wing and um, in isolation at the moment, so they're doing fine, um. In addition to that, uh, we're sending some staff, uh, HR was gracious to coordinate a training for us, so. Uh, we'll be sending some staff there to another county for LGBT two, two, PQ training. Um, we've hired a clinical risk nurse, Hope McDonald, who started this week, we're very happy to have Hope with us. Um, she's an LPN and will be overseeing the risk management uh, for the clinical services department, um. We are actively recruiting for a staff scheduler, we've had a few interviews, I just want to say thank you so much for offering the sign on bonus. This is truly a challenging position to coordinate over a hundred plus. Uh, LNA's to MNAs to LPNs, RNs to schedule um, this community uh, twenty four seven, seven days a week. So it is a huge undertaking, so thank you um, for that. Um, I'm very excited, as Commissioner Coyle also mentioned, the assisted living, um, pre-COVID. Uh, we were doing full service plated dining in our assisted living, um, and it has finally been restored. Uh, after nearly three years, so I'm very excited to um, have the residents be able to come to a communal area. Have a server wait on them and order their meal, so it's, it's very pleasant over there at the moment, so. Very happy about that, uh, family newsletter went out for the quarter, um, and to those on our waitlist and um, our current families. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you Jason, I'm gonna go to the sheriff's department, and I just wanted to put a record, I want to make sure that we have Major Bashar. And Deputy Sheriff Sawyer is is uh, in the meeting as well, so, so, so you are sheriff.
Good morning, um. Some little bit of news this morning, when I came in, one of my dispatches, uh, is resigning to go to work for another. By department, and uh, but he is gonna stay on, he is gonna stay on part time. Which will help us out, we do have other applications in, so we are going through them and. Trying to get that dispatcher sent uh, up to where it should be, uh, we are getting a lot of responses from. Other local um, police departments in Rocketton County where they are gonna be looking for dispatch help. Down the road, we're looking at it, um, we've also got assistance from uh, smaller towns. Um, try to help, they they're definitely short staffed, and we're looking into trying to give these people some hand on that. Some programs that we're looking at, uh, it just. Recruitment retention, that's, that's the problem, but, I mean, we are fortunate enough that, you know, the county is. Working hard for recruitment for us to get dispatch, so we really appreciate it. And just, we continue to be busy, continue to be busy in that drug unit. And we've been very busy helping our local enforcement partners with all the little problems that they've been having.
Um, just what I will write in, our transport division, uh, the chief justice came down, uh. Last month, or two months ago, with the order that they were opening up back to in person dispositional hearings. So a lot of the hearings that used to be done from jails, wherever these folks were located, these folks now have to appear in Rocky Hill. So our transport division, uh, has seen a strong uptick in the transports, we're going up to Carcass and picking up. Folks that might be housed in Berlin, they bring them to the Carcass for us, but we have to pick them up in Carcass. So we've seen a a huge uptick in our transport division too.
I mean, there was one Monday when we came in, we actually had to take our patrol division. If we transport, just to transport these people all around, that's how busy they they are getting down there. But that's, that's about it, I don't know if the major wants to say anything, or?
No, I'm good today.
Yeah, otherwise, then have a great week.
Thank you. Thank you. Jason Henry. Morning.
Commissioner, I know Superintendent Henry is going to do his. Report, but Department Head, but we always also have a walk-in, so perhaps somebody's down to, yeah, I know. Yeah, thank you.
You got a late walk-in, too?
Yeah, I know, honey, well. I will send them to the Sheriff's Department there too, because their transports up, that means us as well for. Getting people and processing to get ready to go back to courts. Which again, it was so nice, we got away from that and we're doing more video arrangements, but it's just gonna cause. It's more paperwork, it's more time intensive, labor intensive when they go out, plus when they come back in, it's changing out and everything else. And again, we're gonna add felonies first going away at the end of the year, so this is just gonna go up on their transports and up on us getting people in and out of the facility again.
Yeah, because we're gonna.
That's too bad, because the state had said, you know, I'll put all these video arrangements in. And it's been working, I don't, it's just, for me, it's a shame of going back to taking people out of the building.
Yeah.
Today I have a private care quarterly meeting to go over all of our, what's gone on last quarter. That'll be good. Last, I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department again. Couple days ago, we had a, a lady was being terminated from our adult diversion. It didn't go very well, whereas she wanted to have some, you know. Say she was new self-harm. Then our staff kind of had to overpay a little bit, as a sheriff and Brentwood PD had to deal with her and get her an ambulance and get her some help, so. We do thank them for being here and both police departments and Sheriff's Department there helping us on that. It was kind of a scary situation for a woman that works over there. So the warrants are rest are up, so they're coming in as well too. I am seeing all kinds of different drugs now lately, we've recently, we had crack. Come back inside the facility, so I don't know if the sheriff's seeing more crack around the area or not, but we've seen some coming here, which I haven't seen in a while. And. Exeter Hospital, again, not happy with us. We had a free person. Who still needed some medical help. And so we dropped him off at Exeter Hospital to get medical help. And they're still upset with us. They don't seem to understand that they're, they were on the street. They can go there themselves, or any police department picks them up, says you want some, you need medical help, they get dropped off there, but. They seem to think somehow, some way, we can. Keep these people when they're free. So again, they seem to be angry with the jail and me. Every other week, so it's nothing new. Beyond that, the academy's going on, started this past Monday and that's going extremely well. And, and that's all I have to report. And a couple of walk-ins from the commission.
Okay, just on that point, Jason. If someone says that they need medical help. We're obligated to send them to the hospital, otherwise it's a liability to the county, correct?
Well, and that's the opinion I do take on it. I say if somebody, they ask for medical help, and we don't, yeah, I think we would be held on the hook for it. There are times, depending on when they're, they're in here and they ask for medical help and it's appropriate, we'll call an ambulance to come pick them up. Which that's happened to, and then that person assaults the ambulance driver in the hospital and they want to blame us for putting them in an ambulance, why didn't we go? I have to explain again, they are free individuals. I have no authority over them to go in that ambulance or to go with them. And they don't, they have a hard time with that thing. So it is a catch-22, matter of which way you look at this.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Commissioner, may, may I just chime in on this? We have been seeing. An influx with referrals, with behaviors from Exeter, trying to find placement for individuals. And they're just not appropriate for our community as well, so I know that they're bedlocked and trying to open up some of their beds. They're in and out of code white over there quite often. So they don't have available beds. We're trying to work with them the best we can, but, you know, we, we can't. We can't have our staff getting beaten up, or, you know, it's not the right environment, so just wanted to let you know that as well.
Yeah, this has been in the, in the national news and everything. It's, I know the state of New Hampshire's working on it. Maybe not be as fast as we really want to, but there are discussions up in Concord. I know the governor's mentioned, talk to hospitals, and there's a lot of that stuff going around, but we need to figure it out as a whole, but thank you very much for that update.
Well, Commissioner, I just thought I'd throw this one thing out there real quick. Even if they get the beds open for these. People, they're long-term, the issue that the jail has is not gonna change. Because their, their individuals are going out the doors to need help and Exeter Hospital is the designated receiving facility. That we have to bring them to, this is the closest one, you know, Sheriff's Department runs in the same thing we all do. I'm sorry they don't like it, but that's the designated receiving facility, and they're still gonna get these people. They may hopefully get some people out of the facility so they can have more room, but. This issue is not gonna go away.
Right, and I think you're doing the right thing, so we'll just keep doing what we're doing until things change, but.
And no matter what, they're gonna be, to Superintendent Henry's point, I mean, they have to be. Have the evaluation somewhere, and that's Exeter Hospital. So.
Before I go around the other, for the other department heads, Commissioner Coyle, a couple of motions.
So, I moved to approve a line item transfer for Department of Corrections and the amount of twenty thousand dollars from, and that's gonna be transferred from. The inmates at other facilities line to the inmate transportation line. Dated March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I moved to approve an out-of-state conference for two Department of Correction employees, JC and JM. To attend the East Coast Gang Investigation Conference in Warwick, Rhode Island, from April eleventh through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. For an amount not to exceed one thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixteen cents, as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
I'll say, Jason. All right, I'm gonna go to Robin. Burnier.
Good morning. I don't have anything to report today.
Nothing?
Nothing, nothing.
Wow, go Sox?
All right.
Oh, go Sox.
I go to Jude Gates.
I have almost nothing to report today. We're very busy, budget, 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 hiding everyone's checks off this all week. The. Well, the floor is progressing nicely, they're installing, they're installing the screen, they'll be running company testing soon to send the results up to DES, so that's going well, anything about that. Fishing game is asking us to revisit the. The management plan that we signed off on last week, because they'd like us to include a little. Requirement to raise our. Mower deck about another inch from where we do it now to protect a potentially endangered turtle. Which has been sighted down by the fire pond, but not so much in the heat field. But I don't think it's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna affect our operations, so the, the wetland scientist that's been working with us and helping us to. Speak the language with fishing game, it should have that wrapped up, I'd be able to do the best hope.
Okay.
Other than that, we're busy.
Okay, so I just a quick question, because I know. We have a field there and then we have a field up the road a little bit. So we're just gonna treat everything the same, is the same equipment or different equipment?
We use the same equipment, but the field up there, there's a lot of wetlands, so it's a lot different. The issue is that the bathroom property is where we have a spray irrigation, so it's actually from our wastewater treatment facility.
Yeah.
It's treated and we spray it on the field up there in Hay.
Okay.
It's the same equipment essentially, I think fishing game made some suggestions that we might want to switch to. A sickle-barn mower instead of the mower that we use more of. We're just gonna raise it an inch, so it'll be the same equipment, it'll just be a slight change to the operations that I don't think the impact is really involved. We still can't get out there until August first anyway, because of the bird.
Right.
So the bird is August first, now the height of the mower deck.
Let me ask you a question about the bird. It's been like three years, does it not fly away?
Well, it's actually, one of.
Oh, does it come back?
Yesterday, it comes back.
Same bird comes back, because it.
I don't know if it's, although birds live for a long time. I don't know that it's the same bird. I, in some cases, it probably could be. Yeah, but this is definitely their, this is their favorite habitat, is on the edges of these grassy bogs, so. It was one-sided yesterday.
That's kind of cool.
Pretty exciting. Yeah, they're getting ready to do their nesting. Audubon will look at it for us, we'll give them a call. Before we start mowing in August, just to make sure that.
Yeah.
We're good, you know, they're all hatched and gone. But.
Thanks Jude.
Thank you.
Allison.
Spring's coming, the birds are coming.
We have a bird report.
The metalwork.
So we, I finalized the stuff for the sheriff supervisors, negotiation, documentation. That all went over to Steve Arnold, and I'm just waiting for his feedback on that. It was just more of just reaffirmation of information, so hopefully I'll get that. By early next week. We do have the LGBTQ plus workforce meeting that's being driven, it's a seminar. By the New Hampshire Association of Counties under the HR affiliation group. We have about ten people going from our county, and so that's a very good showing from county attorney to admissions assistants, social workers, human resources. And our public relations and community outreach person, so thank you for everybody. For participating in that, I think it's gonna be, oh, and the Department of Corrections has two folks coming too. And so we have the bus, thank you to Jason Smith. For allowing us to have that transportation on the bus for those folks, so they'll all go up on the bus together. I've arranged for box lunches, so they'll have that on the way back, because it is quite a hike. It's gonna be held at the Cheshire County Department of Corrections Facility. In Keene. So. Thank you for those that are gonna participate. I think it's gonna be very insightful and helpful to us as we come back into the community and go forward, so thank you. That's all I have, and it's been budget, budget, budget time, regrades. Status changes and.
You take an over check next to your board?
No, I'm just, I'm brief, and so, and I apologize for not getting anything out to you, because I've been just trying to get all the paperwork, and so I have two of them came on, I've got like three or four more that are gonna come on, so next week or the following. And I, I should say, we did have a meeting with Gallagher, our broker, that happened this week. It was very helpful, insightful, it's kind of. Panning out the way I thought it would be on the stop-loss. But good news that we have the carrier that will stay with us, and so they are coming to present.
Oh, I was gonna ask.
Next week, and then the following week, all of the motions will come forward to the board, because everything will have to be finalized, so that I can get it in the budget, and then the con. The vendors get time to, like, all the paperwork that has to happen for the plan year.
Okay, so great, so next week, I was gonna ask you.
They are, next week.
But Allison, the flip side of what you, by you being brief, was an implication that Chuck is not brief.
I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna say, without repeating what Allison said.
Corollary.
Protection right now, for stuff.
Yeah, like Allison said, budgets, new negotiations. You know, being with Gallagher, that did go well, the stop-loss results were a little bit better than what might have been feared actually, so that's, that's good news for the county.
Yeah.
Again, really busy budgets, I apologize to those departments, I didn't get your projections out yet. It's just been very busy and I keep on getting interrupted on a multitude of. Of other things. My, my hope is to wrap them up today and get them out to you, so. I believe I've incorporated any special requests for certain positions. I've incorporated some of the things that, that, that we've discussed with the board as well. And again, please keep in mind that these projections are just a placeholder, expect the numbers to change. As far as payroll, you know, wages, expenses go, and the ultimate termature proposed budget. Yes, Emily, Tomasi has started as our grant writer. She hasn't reached out to all the parts yet, she's reached out to some several times to meet with them, but the goal is for her to obviously. Meet with each and every department and sit down face to face. And kind of go over what your operations are and get a sense of. You know, again, what grant opportunities you've done in the past, what maybe you're looking for, and maybe on her own researching and digging into. What might be available out there that, you know, we may not know that's available. So thank you to Jude for forwarding a online seminar thing. That she'll be attending to as far as for different state agency grants surrounding water, infrastructure type. Things like that, you know, be fast. And again, we're just, you know. Very busy, payroll did go a little bit later than what we'd like it to, but. That's, that's how it goes sometimes, and obviously meetings continue with UKG. And we already went over the rental system, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for that, it's, it's, it's unfortunate. We've had some problems with the ones that stay at hotels, because hotels. Even though what we would pay over, if you have the reduced amount, could actually keep them there. For a week or two or whatever, hotels are just saying, well, you're not paying us for the whole month, they're out in April first.
Yeah, that, there's a, there's a legal reason for that, I'm not gonna get into that now, but anyway.
So that's where, so that's where it's like, maybe we can serve for certain individuals, it's direct assistance, and they at least can use that to stay. So at least, to some extent.
Yeah.
And they get, they probably get a better room rate than. But the county was given, and, and that way at least, maybe on April first, you know, they would still have a place.
Okay.
To, to me.
Very good, thank you. Leila, do you have anything that you want to share with us, or any, any private heads?
Yes, I just want to make sure everyone saw my memo about the deadline for the agenda submissions for next week's meeting is tomorrow at two. And if we can, please keep the agenda very light, because we do have. Department budget meetings for the rest of the day, as well as the Gallagher presentations, so we'd like to keep the agenda very light, please.
Okay. Now, I see someone on Zoom that popped in, I can't see the number, I don't know if it's the private head or if it's someone from the public, I'm not too sure. Is there, is, is a member from the public with the, what's the phone number?
Scott.
Oh, Scott, please. Yeah, go ahead Scott, I'm gonna let you, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Well, I'll just let you know, I've been coming in on Saturday, get trying to catch up on the reconciliations. Good news, I did, I didn't get frisked when I came in. You know, I was able to put my code in and it all worked, so. That, that was good, I heard, I got an email from Robin that. The computer was set up in the office down there, so, and I'll be in there tomorrow again to continue on. I sent the, sent the list to. The Finance Weekly on stuff that has to be revised and. Stuff is coming down and it's getting, you know, redone and signed off on.
Okay, very good. Thanks Scott, appreciate you calling in. I think that's it. Commissioner Coyle, do you have a question?
Oh no, I was just gonna add that the Primex Conference is open for, for anybody, it's open for registration.
Okay.
And so, as department heads want to send individuals, the conference is free to, if, just to attend the conference, so.
Very good.
It's very, lots of useful training sessions.
Yeah, we had a good time last year, it was very, they had a lot of good speakers and everything. So, okay, so I think we're, I think we're gonna go into, well, I'm, I'm sorry, we're gonna do more business. Is there any new business to be had? From anybody? I just want to mention under new business that there was some correspondence that Scott previously had sent over to me. I made both my fellow commissioners aware of it by copying them. With communication with Chuck is. So there was some back and forth, I think that they're now in communicated, communication, both Chuck and Scott together. To figure out the processes that they want to move forward. I know that Scott had mentioned that. Because of COVID, it was tough getting in here, so I think they're just trying to get back onto the same page, but I just want to let everybody know that that's being worked on. And I think that, that's it for new business, and we're gonna go into, is there anybody from the public? At this point wishing to speak? I don't see anybody. There is nobody, okay. Thank you everybody, hope everybody has a great day and. Talk to you soon.
Make a motion to. Enter non-public, first number to ninety-one eight three. Section two A regarding personnel.
Second motion's been made and seconded on, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Yes, I vote yes, who are we inviting in?
I, I think it's, Julie's coming, Allison, Chuck, and Julie.
Okay. Very good, we're gonna take a couple minute recess here, so we're waiting for Julie to come in, in the meantime, so. Everybody has a great day.
I moved to seal the minutes on the first non-public until July first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second, seconded.
Any discussion, if not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes, I vote yes.
And then on the second non-public, I moved to seal those minutes. Indefinitely, because it affects the. Well, no, it could render a further decision. In a, a proposed action ineffective at this time, and there's no determination. In a proposed action ineffective at this time. And there's no determination of when that decision will be concluded.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded on the motion, Commissioner Badu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, I have one more piece I'd like to bring up to the commissioners. I received a, actually a text message from Jason Brosky. Who I believe is the chair of the Rockingham GOP.
Rockingham County Republican Committee.
Yeah, I think it was the.
County Republic.
He's the chair, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and he is asking permission to use the Hilton for a. Meeting with no more than sixty people for a person that is. Possibly running for president. And I had told him that I would I had a meeting today and I would discuss that with both commissioners. So. Didn't know where you guys felt on it.
What's the date?
And time.
He's looking for. Sunday, the sixth, April sixteenth. I'm sorry, hold on a second, hold on a second. Between eight AM and three PM on Monday, April seventeenth. Not the whole, not the whole period. He just doesn't know what time specific. He said it's about an hour. Low key quiet, probably sixty people.
I think we. I've raised some concerns about it's a working day. There's going to be a lot of that. We won't have the parking or accommodations. I have also some concerns because sixty cars is quite substantial. Maybe it won't be quite that much, but if it's a. Potential presidential candidate, then there's also concerns they're going to have. There's could be some security. I don't know who it is, but depending on. If they're in office somewhere, there's security considerations. And I just don't think during. On a workday when we have a a parking lot full, that this would be the appropriate place to host this event.
Correct.
Here's my concern is more. More general. I know traditionally the Rockingham County Republican Committee. Was meeting for their regular monthly meetings in the evening at the Hilton. And we 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 offered that. I don't know how that happened. It was before I was on board. But I do know that they were meeting there regularly. So. And they're not meeting there now.
No, they're meeting.
They're meeting at the.
Satellite.
Satellite saloon. So. The question is, are we going to open this to all political groups? And are we going to open it to other political candidates? You know, especially during the day. If I mean, if we are, then I guess it's appropriate. If we're not. Then it's not appropriate. I think we just need to be even handed about how how it's handled. I I can tell you. The the person he's bringing in. Will not have security. With them, not currently an office holder. I'm guessing who it would be because. Vivek, yeah, Ram Shamani has. Other events scheduled that same day in Seabrook and Portsmouth. So he's obviously, you know, they load things in and they go to different places. And he's looking for a room for an extra stopover for people to meet him. But and. My question is really in general. During the day or I mean, who who do we allow to use the Hilton auditorium? And is there's no fee or there's no? I doubt that we charged them fees before.
No, I don't think we have. And I think we've had like blood drives and stuff like that. I don't know about. Political stuff, although you mentioned that in the past, that was before my time, Mr. Commissioner. On the usage of Hilton.
Well, it was fairly recent. I think some of the move came because there was an event and. When they previously had it, there was some disturbance. There was a group that came in. There was some, I I'm.
Oh, I'm familiar with that.
I don't know. I wasn't there, so I don't, I mean, I just, I what I heard is that there was some disturbance or some a few people that caused some disruption. It had, it did have some impact. On some residents and residents' family. Not like overtly, just like it was like racing in the parking lot type thing.
And I don't think that the message was sent out to the people coming in, like we had a park. What door to enter and because they were entering into that door, they're entering the other door, which caused a big commotion.
I don't.
This was January.
Maybe. It was. London Dairy.
Right, the they they this was one of their regular. County Republican meetings. And when they had elections.
Right.
And there was some dispute.
Right.
About how the election was being handled. And I think the sheriff's office even showed up to make sure that things were in line. I don't think they got way out of hand, but they were yelling.
They got called. The sheriff's department got called because it got elevated.
Um, that that's on, that's really unusual. That that really.
I don't think I've known it. To your point, I think that's the only time I've heard such an incident. That's it. I don't think we should be. In the business of hosting, like if. The residents decide, you know, if there's something set up internally, like for instance, if the long-term care is part of. They, you know, activities, they want to bring a panel of. Of nominees or, you know, candidates or something that they want to. You know, so the residents can have access. I think that's.
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing. Who's gonna? Is this for the residents to go meet this guy?
No.
So.
This is a private.
He's looking to get a private room.
Then I my. I would not support it.
Yeah, I don't want the Democrat candidates calling us and saying they want a room and then the Libertarian candidate saying that they want to use the room during the day.
Well, this is this is good conversation. I know in my town, Derry, we banned all political because you've got to stay consistent. It's either going to be all or nothing. So if you say yes, then you do have to open it up for the Democrats and the Libertarians. You have to be there. And so I know in the town of Derry, we have a strict policy that no politicians. As a matter of fact, I think Jean Jean wanted to. Meet at the dairy fire department one time and they said, no, you can't. It's just the policy that they have. Nobody. So anyway. I'm just, I'm just putting that out there. Is that the way? I mean, we should probably make a decision of.
I think that. My biggest concern is that it's in the middle, the entire span of the day. During working hours when we have a lot of, I mean, parking is going to be a major issue for sixty people on a Monday. So and it's not in the evening and it's or on the weekend when there's more spaces in the parking lot. So when there's a shortage of parking and there's someone coming in for their shift and they can't find parking because it's consumed with. I mean, that's a problem, right? We need to continue the orderly conduct of business here. So I think we should. I think the answer is no for anyone during. The weekdays during the day. And that we should talk about maybe developing a policy for use of the Hilton for nights and weekends.
Any group.
Yeah, any group. I'm not talking about, and that's why I'm saying that it's not about, you know, like into. It's nice if we can offer a public space. There aren't a ton of public spaces. So to the extent that we can share our public space. With any with groups, that's wonderful. I, you know. We. What we should probably do is sort of try to define, are there limitations, times, things like that? But I don't think that's something we need to take up right now. I think we can easily say during the. That we're not going to outsource it. You let people use a space. For large groups during the days, weekdays.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that we're. We have so much extra space and parking space that that we want to be inviting other groups and it's got nothing to do with this specific.
And.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Which in general I'm in favor of, but that's got nothing to do with.
I mean, it doesn't matter which.
Right.
So I'm going to let you, I'm going to let Jason know that that is a no because specifically because of the time and the parking issues.
Yeah, that's really.
And that we as commissioners will formulate a a policy coming up soon because my next thing is, is he going to try to change the time and say, well. Well, well, six o'clock be better, but I'm just going to tell him that we'll we'll discuss the future policy and let him know.
And I think we want to have as part of that policy discussion, talking with Jason Smith about the needs and talking about with the sheriff about things get out of hand. Like have a discussion maybe with a few of the department heads about or Jude, you know, in terms of if there's no, you know, there's lots of considerations. Even our liability if there's a snowstorm and we're having an event, you know.
Now, if he wants to bring somebody in. For the residents, to me, and he wants to coordinate that with Jason Smith and. The whoever's doing the enrichment, you know, I mean, that's a different discussion and that's on them.
Yeah, I'd be a little bit, I'd be a little bit concerned with that with still with COVID and.
Well, right.
Jason, that's not our.
But anyway, all right. So I think we're set.
And that's for the residents. I mean, we want to have the residents to have the access to.
Whoever.
Whomever, ever, yeah.
So, all right, we have any other business to deal with? If not, I'll take an entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I wasn't famous, say aye. We are.